Give you a little history of what we've been trying to do. A few years ago, we started a parks program called the Park Ambassador Program. And we tried to partner with local church organizations and other local leaders in the community. The goal of that was, I don't know if you folks are on social media or not, I get tagged in a lot of posts with different things happening at the parks, some good, some negative, right? So the goal is to try to provide some type of oversight in our parks to make sure that our kids and our families have a safe place to go where they can enjoy the parks. Obviously, I'm only one person in the city. We can't do it alone. We need, we need the help of you guys. So Mr. Slade, do you want to get us here? We'll look at council members here, Mr. Slade. Anyways, about six months ago, Cody, our rec director and I, we sat down and we started to think about what could we do different? We were struggling to get park ambassador volunteers for many reasons. Some of the reasons were that some of the adults that we had volunteering just didn't feel comfortable because they were seeing all of the positive interactions were good. You know, it was nice to be able to walk up to families that had a City of Fremont shirt on, they had a golf cart, and they were identifiable. The problem was, is when they would be disrespected, they started to feel uncomfortable because they didn't know how to respond back. Does that make sense? So they were felt, they felt that they were being put in uncomfortable positions and it just, it just, and we started to lose volunteers. So what Cody and I came up with about six months ago, we were talking, our goal was, what can we do to program our entire park system throughout the city? We have some amazing employees. If you, if you were an employee or volunteer working on this behind the scenes, if you could just stand up so that way you could be recognized. I know the chief is here, Sarah is here, Brandon is here, you're a CRC member. There's, there's some people that didn't stand up. Haley is one of our summer programs, Jordan McNeer, the chief.
We stacked them out.
We stacked them out. There's about six people.
Did the chief stand up?
So here's what we're looking to do. The goal of this, of this program is to partner with local businesses, get local businesses involved, and look for sponsorships and other community partners to help program our parks and get ideas from the public of what they would like to see in the parks. And the goal would be to send out something to our school kids throughout our Fremont City School District and our private school system here and give a calendar to family members with things that they can do throughout the summer to be involved in some different programs in the parks. So that's the concept. The rec director is leading this, and he will give you a brief presentation on what you can do to help make all this possible. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, you pretty much summed it all up. So if anybody's got any questions, I'll take questions now. Good to go. Anyways, I'm Cody Bishop on the Recreation Superintendent for the City of Fremont. And before we get started, I just want to say whether you're here for this presentation or for the Bertrand Park Improvement Plan, just want to thank you for being here. Obviously, we put a lot of time and effort into our programs, our events and activities, but getting input from the community is so crucial for us to know that we're on the right track. So as the mayor said, we're rolling out this idea of a summer activities program that's going to be rotating through our park system throughout the summer. And the goal of it is to provide these opportunities for kids in their neighborhood parks. A little bit about what we do before that, the Recreation Department, we've got about 3,000 kids that participate in our youth sports annually. That number is up significantly from about eight, nine years ago. So our biggest priority when I came back here in 2016 was to try and restore our youth sports programs. And we've done a really good job of doing that. Through our baseball, softball, soccer, volleyball programs, we've got a lot of kids that are involved. In addition to that, we have our ice rink, we have our swimming pool, our basketball courts at the rec center, and our exercise equipment. In 2024, we had 28,000 plus visits for children, one to 18 years old. So the things that we have been focusing on, we know we are getting results. We know we're getting kids involved in programs and activities, but not all kids are interested in sports programs. I've got a five-year-old daughter. I have signed her up for T-ball, basketball, and soccer, and I think the shining accomplishment she's had so far is holding another kid's hand and running up and down the court. It hurts me to say this as a sports guy, but I don't think that's for her. And we don't really have opportunities for what we call non-traditional programs. We're really focused on those sports programs, really focused on ice rinks, swimming pool, and our workout facilities, but we haven't really started branching into those non-traditional What kind of got us here in addition to what the mayor was talking about was a student survey that was conducted through our Youth Resource Consortium group back in 2023. What we did is we surveyed sixth through 12th graders in Fremont City Schools, Clyde Green Spring Schools, and Bishop Houghlin Schools. We asked them questions about what types of activities do you like to do now? What types of activities are things that would be new that they would like to try? Who do you like to do these activities with? How would you like to learn about them? And where would you like to participate in these programs? When we got the results, it kind of fit perfectly with what Mayor Sanchez and I had been discussing. When we talked about something new, these are like the non-traditional programs that we talked about. We had tons of responses. We did allow students to check any box, so if it was something of interest to them, they could have checked more than one response. But as you can see from the graph, I don't know if it shows up well for you guys back there, but arts, music, nature, physical activity, reading, gaming, of course, movies, TV. But the results really were focused on those non-traditional programs. So as they come in, you know, we kind of look at arts, we look at reading, we look at nature, and we see that those were the top three answers that our students responded to in this youth survey. When we went a little bit deeper into that survey, we looked at where students would like to participate in those programs. For us, our sports programs are usually at the rec center, they're at our athletic fields, at Roger Young Park or Anderson Field, but we know that transportation can be sometimes a barrier for children in our community. New locations can be unfamiliar, some people are hesitant to go places that they don't know, but our neighborhood parks are accessible. So if you live near a neighborhood park, if you live near Bertrand Park or Wals Park, Eastside Park, we know that kids can get there, in particular during the summertime when maybe they don't have transportation. So the results showed us it was close to home, home being number one. Still trying to figure out how we program children in their home, but anybody has ideas on that, let me know. But outside of that, it was our schools, it was our parks, and of course, it was kids at home. So all three of those things are familiar places for students. It's places that they probably go on a regular basis. So this fit perfectly in with the idea that we had talked about. Those non-traditional programs are what we focused on when we started to develop this. So just some examples of things that might be non-traditional programs, yoga, exercise classes, some nature programming, gardening. There's new sports programs that we really haven't tapped into, non-traditional sports, pickleball, one of the fastest-growing sports in the country, kickball, sand volleyball. And then it indicated educational programs like book clubs, reading programs, Storytime, and of course STEM. But it's going to take a community effort. So as Mayor Sanchez explained, what we're hoping to do is meet with members of our community, organizations inside of our community who look at this and say, I have a unique skill, I have a program, I have an activity that I could adapt and bring to one of our neighborhood parks, or I have the ability to sponsor a program, I have the ability to make an in-kind donation. Maybe you're a yoga instructor, you'd be willing to come and teach a yoga class at Bertrand Park on Tuesdays and Thursdays. The goal is ambitious. We want a park activity every day in at least one park, and we want to do as best as we can to make sure there are no financial barriers for kids. The rec department is not planning to put any registration fees through this program whatsoever. We want to eliminate those barriers with transportation, financial barriers, and making sure that kids have access to these activities. We'd be rotating these programs throughout our parks throughout the summer, beginning in June to mid-August, about the week of the fair. What we're proposing to do with our, our calendar is to create something like this that you can see on the screen. This comes from Boardman, Parks and Recreation District down in Southern Ohio. We were able to meet with them when we went to the Ohio Parks and Rec Conference earlier this year. They produce this every single year, and it lists every program, activity, and special event that they have in their community throughout the entire summer. They actually mail this to about 20,000 residents. Our plan, of course, is to print about 5,000 copies of this and get this distributed to Fremont City Schools, Bishop Houghlin Schools, and then of course, businesses throughout the community as well. As a partner, as a business who's on board with this program, we also want to use this as an opportunity to provide you guys with some recognition. So obviously, if you were going to be involved in this program and you were going to be volunteering, offering services in our parks, we would 100, 100% expect that we would be giving you guys some recognition as well. So one of the awesome things they do with their calendar, the top part is the calendar for the month, the bottom part, some high-level special events, but then also they're highlighting program partners, sponsors, advertising, and of course, distributing that to many as people as possible. The biggest key, once we get this rolling, we get that calendar put together, is of course, going to be bringing awareness to our community. So step one is putting that into the school system. Step two is flooding our social media, our electronic communication, and making sure that our residents have access to all the activities that are going on. The way we envision this is that's going to be on somebody's refrigerator. Their kids are going to wake up on a Tuesday morning and they're going to see what's going on today on Tuesday and realize that, you know, at 2:00 in the afternoon, there's a pickleball program at Bertrand Park. So at 2:00, they can hop on their bikes, they can walk to the neighborhood park. We'll have volunteers or staff members there who are going to help with instruction, a supervised, safe space for them to participate. And when that event gets over, hey, maybe we've got two today. Maybe there's another event going on at Roger Young, or there's an event going on at Big Skender Park. So we want a diverse offering of programs. We want those spread out throughout the park system inside of the community, and we just want to make sure that this information gets where it needs to go. With that being said, I know there's another presentation going on after this. Encourage everybody who's here to stay and listen to both of these presentations today and give your opinions and feedback on both our program and the improvements that are going to be made at Bertrand Park. But I think we've got time to do a little bit of question and answer. But also, we'll be set up out in the hallway as well. So my staff and I will be out there in the hallway to take more questions, jot down contact information. If you've got an idea for an activity or program that you think would be good for this, we would love to hear from you. Again, we all have a passion for doing this work as city employees. This is, you know, kind of our life's calling. We love what we do, but sometimes we need a little help. So it's a great community here in Fremont. I'm born and raised here. I love the city of Fremont. There's fantastic businesses, fantastic organizations inside this community that I know if we work together, we can make this program a reality and we can really kind of swing for the fences on this one. So again, with that being said, if anybody has questions, I'd be happy to answer a few questions now, or I'd be happy to meet you out there in the hallway. I do expect everybody to stop and at least give me some kind of feedback, positive or negative, so that we can kind of get this thing moving in the right direction. Yes?
Apologies if you already said this. What's your timeline for nailing down a calendar for the summer?
Well, we've got to get it distributed to the school system. So before kids leave for the summer, we want to be able to get it delivered. Thankfully for us, we've got a great relationship with Fremont City Schools and Bishop Houghlin Schools. So once we have that calendar finalized, it's a pretty quick process for us to get that board approved and get it into the schools, but we'd probably like to get this out by the beginning of May.
For any activity that's planned for the day, is there going to be a way that the people putting it on is going to get a number of how many people are showing up? Or is this something that's just going to be open and we're planning from one to 100?
It might depend on the activity. So we've talked to some folks, and we've had a few ideas that have been brought to us already. So certain activities, we're probably going to ask people to do a registration just to guarantee that they have a spot for the materials. So we've spoken to a few people, you know, I use a birdhouse example. Somebody's willing to come in and kind of teach kids how to build a birdhouse. Well, obviously, we need to have the material for that to make sure there's enough for the kids that come. So those types of activities and events, we are going to do a registration, but a lot of it is going to be organic, just come, show up, no pre-registration. But if you're an organization or a business that wants to do an activity and you say, hey, I've got to know how many are coming, we can work that into our registrations also.
One other thing, is there, is there a way or is it possible where you can break down age groups also?
Yeah.
Like this day can be this age from this age, then this next week can be this age and that age.
Definitely.
And that way you can sort of specialize.
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, it's, it's an open book. We really don't want to pigeonhole ourselves into anything. So as, as a provider of an activity or a program, you know that program and activity better than, than I do. So, you know, if you're telling me this is designed specifically for eight to 13-year-olds, and then maybe on Thursday, I can kind of trim it down so that way it reaches a younger audience. We're listening, we're going to do everything that we can to make sure that the program's fit what you're able to do too.
Okay. One more question.
Yeah.
Depending on the, depending on the activity and stuff like that, for instance, Iron Core Gym would be there, we would create an activity around fitness or, you know, something to that effect. Where's the liability from?
So we will have a waiver. It's still kind of in the process of being drafted. We've got to make sure that all those Ts are crossed and Is are dotted. So our staff, our rec camp staff will be hiring a few additional rec camp staff this year. They're going to be onsite every time we have an activity. So as kids come in, we get those waivers if they have their parents. There's a program very similar to this in Sidney, Ohio. They have a process for doing that where the parents actually sign the waiver form at the beginning of the year, and we keep those on file. So there's a couple of different ways that we can do it, but obviously, we've got some options to make sure that everybody's covered. Thanks. Yes?
Are there any programs in the past that you've seen haven't worked and probably wouldn't go forward with? So if anybody has a suggestion, just...
So for us, this is brand new. This is the first time that we're going to kind of be dipping our toes into this type of a format. I mentioned Sidney, Ohio, they've had a program similar to this for probably 20 years. They have got a lot of different activities. They've had mixed results. They've had some that were really positive and some where you might have had four or five kids. For us, we won't know until we try. You know, and obviously, I think that the biggest thing is making sure that people are aware of it, we promote it well, and the process for attending is clearly outlined to people so that there's really no hurdles or obstacles for people to come.
Oh, would we be able to use like gym space or stuff of that nature at the rec department to inside activities?
Yeah, I mean, anything is, is possible at this point. I think our focus is trying to get kids outside as much as possible, but of course, weather's not always going to cooperate with us either. So we know that the rec center is a great facility to have as a backup plane for activities, and we've got a space there that can be integrated to do a lot of different things. So if, if we think it's going to draw some kids in and they'll show up and participate, we would definitely consider doing that too.
I know Fremont City Schools and Bishop Houghlin both put on like youth sporting camps. Have you thought about tying in with them at all to get in? So, you know, kids working with kids in that aspect of it?
Yeah, I mean, we've spoken with the school systems. What they do with their camps is, it's a great model, it's a, it's a great system that they've had developed for a number of years. We would love to have some of those students or those coaches come participate in activities with us, but during that time, we've already kind of outlined on the calendar when their events are planned, we kind of want to go the opposite direction. So if Fremont City Schools is doing a football camp July 10th, or whatever the case may be, we're going to look at a different type of activity, a non-traditional sport activity. Because again, we just know not all kids are interested in doing sports, and we want to be able to engage as many kids as possible. So we'll work with them as closely as we can and then try not to compete with them at the same time. Okay. All right. Well, again, thank you, everybody, for coming. I do really appreciate you being here. Appreciate your questions and your feedback. We will be out in the hallway. If you want to stick around and listen to the Bertrand Park presentation, please do that, offer your feedback for Bob Gross as well. But we look forward to talking with you guys outside. Again, thank you for coming.
Call the Meeting of the Laws, Rules, and Ordinances Committee to incession a guest. We're here tonight to discuss enforcement of our zoning codes, and so Erica Williams would explain.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, some of these ordinances have been, we'd like to update them to have more time, to have a more uniform time. It takes some, some of the ordinances take different times, so we'd like everyone to have the same amount of time. So we're going to update them from five days versus, some say 15, some say 10. It gives us more, you know, enforcement and more uniform, yes, uniformity across the board.
So on the ordinances tonight, ordinance number three deals with basically the beginning of that amendment to change the enforcement period. Erica explained that the ORC, is it requires, is that the right word, a five-day?
A five-day, yes.
Yeah, our ordinances right now are written like some of them, they're written to the extent to where it could honestly, it could hopefully be 30 to 80 people. And when you have a situation where a house has a copious amount of garbage, it's in, you know, rodent infestation, just general trash on the street, like curb lawn area, couches and stuff like that, I mean, if you go by with what's written now, this stuff could sit there for an extended amount of time over by letter of law. So what's happened is we're trying to shrink that up that, that gives the five-day, so five days, in my opinion, is plenty of time to clean something up that needs to be, I mean, that's more than enough time.
Well, if, well, one of them says 15 days, one says 10 days.
Yep.
You know, so we're just trying to be more, you know, use...
So if you say five days, and let's say there's a snowstorm or an ice storm, and they can't do whatever it is you need them to do within that five days, will you give them another five days or something?
Absolutely. I will continue to work with citizens. This just gives me the opportunity to, if something's unsanitary or unsightly, it gives me the opportunity to clean up faster versus what the ordinance states, 10 days, 15 days, things like that.
The way it's worded, Eric and Ken have the power to grant exceptions, extensions, if need be, under circumstances that...
Right.
And I believe Ken, you're the ultimate authority then on that extension.
So this position is...
Yeah. Position so... I think that's a case by case and not a written out exceptions list. It's a case by case.
It's case by case. I mean, people were, you know, it could be raining, you know, things like that, or we just found out about it and they didn't know that these rules and, you know, ordinances exist. So, you know, we still will continue to work with people, but this just gives us the option to get things handled quicker, especially because...
The other thing, did you talk about how it goes on the taxes yet or no?
No, we didn't get there yet. I was going to go through each one of these that's on the agenda tonight because there's quite a few that need updating, but some correspond to the other one. So like on the agenda tonight, the, let me see, number three, the 1177, that enforcement violations and penalties, that one is the ordinance in Chapter 11 that states about the 15 days. And then that, I could get with the law director and, you know, start, you know, the prosecution, you know, proceedings and things like that. So that needs, that's the one I'm talking about, the 15 days. That's going to be changed to five as well. The next one is Chapter 1709, Administration Enforcement. That's the same thing that talks about moving the 10 days down to the five. And then Chapter 521, Health Sanitation, that was a 10-day, we're moving that to five. And then the Chapter 129 is Department of Public Safety. That's the section that talks about assessing it to the taxes, and the city has the ability to clean up the property. So then there was just a few typos in like this Chapter 129 that we're cleaning up and fixing up. One of the numbers in there wasn't correct. I think it was just like a publishing typo.
The wording virtually is not identical, but it's pretty much the same. It's just the enforcement period's been changed.
Right.
The authority of how it's enforced.
Well, because that way, if we have something really unsightly, we don't have to wait five days to decide that's what we're going to do. Now granted, we're going to have to spend our own money, but we get to put it on the taxes. And in reality though, we're not going to get a lot of those back because some of the houses are dilapidated and do not have the funds.
They create like a lien on the property?
I'm sorry?
They create like a lien on the property?
Yeah. So when it's sold, eventually, we would get paid. But we would have to limit, obviously, which ones were doing that if we don't think that they're going to be able to pay us. But it's important to be able to...
It works just like the grass mowing.
Yeah, just like the grass mowing, correct.
Any questions for Erica or Ken?
I'm sorry I got here late.
Well, it's, it's ordinances three through six that we're talking about. We're changing the enforcement period for unsightly, dilapidated problems.
Okay. When she was saying that, you know, like I have two houses that I know offhand in my ward that, you see in the front, the ones on Fifth Street, 100 Fifth and Chestnut Street, anyhow, you see it from the front, looks all right. Go to the back, the roof is caving in. There's another one on Fourth Street that the shrubs just hide.
Have you called and let her know all these addresses?
No.
Okay.
No, because the rules are...
My advice would be to call her and give her those addresses.
So and, and we're having this discussion now because Erica would like to be able to have the power, the enforcement power by the end of April when we find the tasks of these ordinances, to be able to go start...
Make it a quicker action rather than a prolonged action. That's the key thing.
I agree.
I think it's great.
This helps Aldar, myself, do a job more efficiently.
And you might have all four of these things that say property with different type frames on each specific violation, for example, right now?
Yeah, right now, yes.
You would have all these things, and one this head day, one the fifth day.
Correct.
Correct.
Uniforms, you know, uniforms.
Keeps everything consistent and still gives me the option, you know, to...
Can I give an example to council?
Yes.
A situation in which this could help? And a couple of other things that we are looking into, when I say we, the administration, myself, the law director, Mrs. Williams, and also Mr. Frost, is we've sat down and we had a meeting. A situation that really brought this to my attention was there was a couch that was out on the street for a lengthy amount of time with, and then there was another residence that was collecting, they were going around and they were doing junk collecting for other people, and they were taking the junk to their home and keeping the trash on the side of the house. And then the trash would then blow all the way down the street. Two different examples. The third example is I've been out to Frickers to patronize the restaurant. At least three times, I've had either employees or manager ask me to address the laundry man, or the car wash situation behind me. The last time I went there, it wasn't very long ago, I went out and looked and there were needles and things like that just laying in the parking lot. And I was embarrassed in all three situations to say, so remember that, that 15-day notice that currently is on the books? That 15 days starts when, when she sends that letter, not two weeks before that. The couch had been out there for two weeks, the car wash had been like that for three weeks, the other trash had been there for a while. How do you look at the public in the eye and say, hey, you know, sorry, we got to give them 15 more days even though you've been dealing with this for a while? So now it's 45 days from while that garbage and debris literally blows down the street and lays in the railroad's property. Currently, that's what we're dealing with right now today, just mass amounts of trash over on Fulton Street, correct? And I have to tell a resident, there's nothing we can do about this. I think this, I think this is an urgent ordinance that needs to be passed through later, especially with the weather. Because when we had the conversation with Erica, I feel like it's my job as the mayor and your job as council to give her the proper tools the same way we would give them to the law enforcement officers to do their job and allow her to have the discretion to utilize that discretion. The goal is always to work with a resident or a citizen to help them address the need. You don't know whether someone's elderly, you don't know whether they're handicapped, you don't know what the situation is. So we should always be mindful of that. However, there does come a point in time where, I'm empathetic, but being sympathetic is totally different. I can't necessarily enable that behavior when it's affecting other people if I don't want that in my neighborhood. So some other things that we are looking at is making sure they have adequate tools on their vehicles. Number one in the budget tonight is a new vehicle so they can adequately have a vehicle that can do the job. The other thing that we're looking at is making sure that they have a computer and a printer in the vehicle so they can type the letter then and not delay that from having to stop there, come to City Hall, and then they get caught up with 10 other things, and then they go back to their house three days later and try to talk to someone who may not, not they can't get ahold of, and then it turns into a whole different process. So this right here is really the teeth they need from council, and then the other tools they need are from the administration to give them the additional resources to be able to act in a way that I feel would be respectful and time-sensitive of the, of the residents, just to kind of give you the bigger picture of what's going on. Those are three different examples of things that have happened to me in the last 30 days.
Any other questions?
I do.
Fire away. Fire away.
Erica, I'm curious, what is our rules on backyard? I always thought it was kind of, it was out of sight, out of mind. Is there any special, I mean, as long as it's along an alley or a little way it should be cleaned up?
There's no special rules.
It just shouldn't?
I mean, it should be kept in a tidy manner. Some people, to be honest, some people may not have a garage. So I take every, you know, case by case, everything in consideration. If they don't have a garage and they have just stuff and it's tidied and things like that, and they don't have a garage, that's not junk. But when you have bags of trash, a bag of garbage, just piles of, you know, stuff, then, you know, we have the conversation, you know? But there's no really rule of thumb. I mean, it's common sense, you know? You can tell when stuff is junk and when stuff's not. But it may be junk to me and not junk to so-and-so. And also, people don't live as tidy as other people. So just because it's everywhere still doesn't mean it's junk. So I just take...
So, your front yard, your backyard should be as nice as your front yard as far as, I mean...
There's definitely zoning rules about your front yard, what's in your front yard, as opposed to backyard. So there's a big...
But cleanliness-wise, they should be similar, you know?
Mr. Ross, I could give you a copy of the ordinances so that way you can maybe look at those. And if you recall, city council and the team have already, a few years ago, several members of council, I believe Mr. Councilman Libo, you may have been...
Well, I just remember passing.
Yeah, so all of our ordinances are updated for the most part, but there's still things that we have to tweak. To get into specific questions about backyards and houses and garages, I'd rather ask questions like that after the meeting or during the presentation of, during the official council.
Okay. Well, I support this five-day because you and I both know, Ms. Williams, that on Western Avenue, there's been issues there that still, I make my rounds every week. And yeah, they'll have the front yard cleaned up some, and I've, you know, we've discussed these places, but they really need to do something that maybe that five days will wake them up.
And we're looking at the different processes. I don't want to interrupt Erica, but you got to remember, some of those processes, we need the law director's help. So, the law director and the prosecutor have a certain way that they like to see things done, so we do our best to comply with what the law director would like to see. And also ask the law director if he would consider maybe making some changes that would give her a little bit more discretion, for example, maybe not requiring a letter to be certified mail. If we have Mr. Sleek in front of us, would you count this as official notice to Mr. Sleek if we can give it to you right now? The law director's been very receptive, and I respect the law director's standpoint because if it does become a criminal issue, he needs to make sure that he has a case that he should present. Why go through all this work and then bring something to court that's ultimately dismissed maybe because proper notification wasn't done or proper service wasn't done and things like that?
A virgin loophole.
So Erica and, you know, myself and Mr. Frost, and I have experience from doing this, you know, from working in the court and from prior law enforcement, as a senior service director. So, we have a new court enforcement officer. Some of the other things that we're doing is looking at changing the hours of the people that are out looking for these new citizens, making sure that we are out in the evenings and on the weekends. We never want the public to get comfortable seeing the car early Monday through Friday at 8:00 to 3:00. You might run into Erica or the other employee, you know, Friday at 7:00 at night or Saturday at 6:00, you know? So, maybe not often, but you just never know when they might be out doing. So we're trying to, just to be direct, 2025 is going to be an emphasis on court enforcement processes, and we need your help to give her the resources to do that.
Anything else for the good of the order? Motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
A second.
Adjourn. Enough?
Thank you, Erica.
Thank you, Erica.
You're doing a great job.
Thank you, Erica.
For the presidency, just to rely on the United States of America, I consider the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and in this world, with liberty and justice.
Roll call.
Fraser.
Here.
Leece.
Addy.
Here.
Elder.
Here.
Libel.
Here.
Reese.
Here.
Sleet.
Here.
Okay. Council has a copy of the minutes from the last meeting. If you had a chance to review them, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? No. Council also has a copy of the agenda. Are there any additions to the agenda?
I make a motion to excuse Councilwoman Leece.
Page 10. John Elder makes the motion to excuse Christine Leece, second. Seth Fraser, second. Roll call.
Addy.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Reese.
Here.
Sleet.
Here.
Okay. Council has a copy of the minutes from the last meeting. If you had a chance to review them, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? No. Council also has a copy of the agenda. Are there any additions to the agenda?
I make a motion to excuse Councilwoman Leece.
Page 10. John Elder makes the motion to excuse Christine Leece, second. Seth Fraser, second. Roll call.
Addy.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Reese.
Here.
Sleet.
Here.
Okay, before we start the meeting, I'm going to give it to Erica Twain here.
Thank you, Madam President, and City Council, and the City Administration for giving us a little bit of time today. At the beginning of the council meeting to recognize the 2024 Officer of the Year. I have a little bit of explanation at the nomination tree. First, I'll invite these gentlemen up here, Sam LeFey, Officer Antonio Oviedo, and Anthony Tompkins. So, Officer of the Year, what is it? Officer of the Year is an award that we, as a department, recognize high performers. And in order to be eligible for this award, you have to be nominated by the command staff. So every year in December or thereabouts, we have a command meeting where command staff basically argues, fights, nominates, talks about high performers, and then fills out nominations. These nominations are then sent to our entire patrol division and other employees of the city, or of the police department, and then there's a vote. So Sergeant Emrich, Sergeant Tony Emrich, Anthony Emrich submit this nomination, which I'm reading. My vote for 2024 Officer of the Year is Officer Antonio Oviedo. Oviedo recently received the Australia Award for being recognized as a leader in the Latino community. For my city schools appreciates the service with the SRO program. I have seen firsthand that the students feel comfortable in speaking to Officer Oviedo while promising for having a home in the school. Officer Oviedo does not get engaged in unobstructing conversations about other people or issues. Officer Oviedo comes to work early every day with a positive mindset. He always keeps the supervisors aware of programs he gets involved in regarding school activities or community events. Officer Oviedo is a team player. He recognizes that other patrol officers and supervisors are being tasked with extra unplanned overtime. He has volunteered numerous times to pick up hours on his days off to do his part, a lot of the times on and are both of his days off. Officer Antonio Oviedo is the most senior patrol officer for the city of Fremont. I'll also add that this is his fourth year of service to the city of Fremont. And halfway through that, I'd like to just give him... His experiences and knowledge are appreciated, but those unrecognized. He is one of the final chapters of this career as a Fremont police officer. Fremont Police Department is a young agency with officers coming and going frequently. Younger officers look at experienced officers for guidance. We should all honor him with this award, for if anything, his dedication and commitment to our agency, and I couldn't agree more. So, the next time you see Officer Oviedo, please convince him that when an officer reaches 25 years of service, they do not have to retire. Especially when they're performing at a high level and specialized roles like the school resource officer program that he's doing for us. So without any further commotion, I have, we have two special guests with us that both came in from out of state. Among the other very special guests who all have supported Antonio Oviedo over the last 24 years inward, I'd like them to come up and present the pin and plaque that we have for him. Well, these gentlemen, come right up here. These are Officer Oviedo's sockets. The first award is a pin that will go on his dress uniform.
I thought you were supposed to smack it.
Yeah. And the second is a very nice plaque.
Jake, I have one other accolade. Tony was the best flag football running back I've ever seen.
Probably still is.
I also want to say that my daughter, Mariah, is also here. She can hear from...
She can get up and get in the picture at least once. Come on up.
I don't want to be wrong.
No, absolutely not.
Yeah, get up there, Jake. Do you see the picture?
Yeah, act like you like it.
All right, and if I could trouble all of you in the hallway for a group picture, that'd be fantastic. One more round of applause.
I didn't say you could give a speech if you wanted.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank Sergeant Emrich for nominating me for Officer of the Year, which was a huge surprise for you. And then when I actually ended up being selected as Officer of the Year, another huge surprise. I actually told him it was about time. But I appreciate it a lot. I'd also like to thank my family, of course, for being there for me, especially my wife. I know how it is being a police officer, and good times and bad times, mostly good. But again, thank you for everything, appreciate it. It was, it was quite a surprise for me. Thank you very much.
Moving on, I have a public notice. Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Fremont is in a public hearing at a municipal building in 323 South Front Street on Thursday, May 1st, 2025, at 6:50 PM. The purpose of this hearing is to review the planning commission's recommendation for a zoning, parcels 1004, 2600, 1000, parcel 1004, 26000900, and 1004, 2600800, our three multifamily residential. Documentation may be examined at the office of the engineer, engineering and zoning in a municipal building from 8:30 through Monday through Friday. Okay, so we'll start the readings.
First reading of an ordinance authorizing fund transfers in the amount of $17,916,769 and zero cents for the calendar year 2025 for the city of Fremont, state of Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, Libel moves to a doubt, and Jim Sleet, second. Is there any discussion?
No.
Roll call.
Addy.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Sleet.
Yes.
Fraser.
Yes.
Third reading of an ordinance to make appropriations in the amount of $66,51,658 and zero cents for expenses and expenditures for the 2025 fiscal year, January 1st through December 3rd, 1st, for the city of Fremont, state of Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Madam President, I move to adjourn. I second. Angie Reese moves to adjourn, and I think Seth Fraser, second. Further discussion?
Yes, Madam President. I hear this makes more sense now rather than later, but the Labor and Finance Committee met last week, I think we were here for several hours, and at the conclusion, it's four.
Thank you. Roll call.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Sleet.
Yes.
Fraser.
Yes.
Addy.
Yes.
First reading of an ordinance amending Fremont Chapter 1177 of the codified ordinances of the city of Fremont entitled Enforcement, Violations, and Penalties and Declaring Emergency.
Is that what you would like?
Yes.
Okay. And that's the first reading of that ordinance.
First reading of an ordinance amending Fremont Chapter 1709 of the codified ordinances of the city of Fremont entitled Administration Enforcement and Declaring Emergency.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
We will ask council to suspend Rule 4 at the next council.
Okay. So that's the first reading of the ordinance.
First reading of an ordinance amending Fremont Chapter 521 of the codified ordinances of the city of Fremont entitled Health, Safety, and Sanitation and Declaring Emergency.
First reading of that ordinance.
First reading of an ordinance amending Fremont Chapter 129 of the codified ordinances of the city of Fremont entitled Department of Public Safety Service and Declaring Emergency.
Ms. Mayor, since you mentioned the next meeting, you'd want the rules suspended. I wasn't going to be in favor of suspending the rules tonight because I want the public to have better notice of this. And so, if perhaps the administration's going to ask for that at the next meeting, I would hope the public, if you do have concerns about the new enforcement mechanisms, that you would come and tell us.
Yep, and thank you, Councilman Libo. And if there's any questions prior to the next meeting, they can always reach out to the administration, and we will all do our best to give them answers prior to that next meeting.
It affects their rights, the nation.
Absolutely. And the reason for the suspension is that way we can start to just work a little closer on dealing with some of the issues that may arise and that are currently already out there. There's letters already out there, and we're following the current guidelines. However, it would just give some stronger teeth in the future cleaning up some other
Okay, and that's the first reading of that ordinance.
First reading of a resolution authorizing approval and the issuance of a warrant for payment of $7,000 and zero cents to Thomas Porter Architects and declaring an emergency.
Madam President, this is actually a bill that got lost somewhere in between the rest of the bills and this is how old the system for Kingston, New Ball Field and Froggy and Park. Talked to Thomas Porter, talked with Kevin Halbeck here, our assistant engineer, who was kind of taking control of that. We're not really sure where the mix-up came in. We just know that they did the books and one employee's got missed, so we don't know if it was on our end or their end. Either way, we're responsible for the bill, so that's why there's more.
I move to suspend Rule 4.
I second. Jim Sleet, you must suspend Rule 4. Danny Addy, second. Any further discussion on the suspension of Rule 4? Roll call.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Sleet.
Yes.
Fraser.
Yes.
Addy.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Move forward. Second. Danny Addy moves to adjourn. John Elder, second. Further discussion?
Madam President, my only comment is we may have more of the design on local dollars, however, the project was, majority of it was funded on the state capital statement dollars. So it was a grant that completed a majority of the work on that new ball dive in Froggy and Park.
Okay. Roll call.
Reese.
Yes.
Sleet.
Yes.
Fraser.
Yes.
Addy.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
First reading of an ordinance accepting the street in rights of way as shown as part of the Sunset Meadows subdivision, Phase 2, and declaring an emergency.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
I defer to the engineer to just update on this rule. I believe it's been inspected by the engineer's office and made city approval.
Yep, that's correct. So, this is for the second phase of the Sunset Meadows subdivision development. Construction is complete. We performed our inspections, reviewed the reports, and obviously, we made recommendations to the planning commission to accept the right-of-way infrastructure. So obviously, it's up to Danny to accept as well. So, but from my end, we're good to go.
Thank you.
Councilman Libo, I ask you to suspend Rule 4 because the rule's already there. It meets city specs, and there's houses being built as part of the phase 2. So it just helps expedite the development of a much-needed house.
I second. Angie Reese moves to suspend Rule 4. Seth Fraser, second. Seth Fraser, second. Any further discussion on the suspension of Rule 4? Roll call.
Sleek.
Yes.
Fraser.
Yes.
Addy.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second, sir.
John Elder moves to adopt. Chris Libel, second. Any further questions? Roll call.
Fraser.
Yes.
Addy.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Sleek.
Yes.
Approved. Okay, moving on. Do you have anybody that wants to give a report on their committee?
Just like the congratulating officer over.
Yes.
Job well done.
Quite an awesome award. Yes.
I remember when you just got on the, on the police force, a lot of people were making comments. And he was, and he's still living there, cleaned up the neighborhood. His car was always parked, police car, the police car was always parked there. So he helped clean up the neighborhood. You don't, I don't think the police department has that many cars.
That's good. Thank you. Okay, Department heads, Ken Frost.
Madam President, you know, the Dave Lawmore shop, it's only a gas building. It's being remedied in some ways. There's going to be traffic issues in that area for a little while. I don't know how long they're going to take to clean the opposite side. A little more work to do than simply just tearing it down with the remedies. You know, it's a little bit of work. One thing I do want to point out, everybody in the room, we do a lot of projects in the city. And there's a lot of brainstorming and planning and stuff. We have two guys right back here. I don't know if you're all familiar with Kevin Hell, our assistant engineer. So we have Tucker and Kevin, they're both ME. So on our staff, we have two certified engineers up working in our engineering office to get all these projects done. And these guys work. I mean, Tucker, he'll be here until 6:00, 7:00 o'clock. Kevin works late all the time. So all these projects that are getting done, those two are the two that are making them all happen. So I just want to make sure that everyone's aware of that and we give them enough recognition that they deserve. Appreciate it, thank you. I definitely appreciate everything they do. They make my job a lot easier, so that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Madam President, just obviously for most of us here for the Burchard Park, public hearing and feedback, information, exciting what can be done in the neighborhood of Burchard Park. And a lot of great ideas. We're going to try to incorporate as many of those great ideas as we can. I would think, not with Thomas Porter Architect coming down here. We'll see over here for two hours. Very gracious engagement, people in conversation. So big plans. And in construction season, you see projects, friendships, local, the corner of Stone Street, Carver's getting down, we'll come next, we're pulling a gas building. And it feels like a lot of things are getting knocked down on the first batch, but that also clears that the path to new development, which we're always excited about. So ABC Home Supply has bought Journeys, and there you'll see their equipment out there, kind of retrofitting, we think, so the building. You've got some other projects that have been commenced in the next 30 to 60 days. How long do you cover in Rule 4?
Any beginning date with the bills for Wendy's?
What?
Any beginning date for their expansion?
Yeah, so they've got another site that they're building in northwest Ohio. So this site probably is not going to see shoveling grounds at full.
Okay. All right, let's do it.
Yeah, that's great.
People in my ward.
Yeah, you got, and then if you're familiar, Sheetz Mortars bought the old Kroger building. I think they're slated sometime in April to maybe get started on the retrofit remodeling of that building. A lot of people are excited about retrofitting this too. And I think they're going to be the first.
No.
Oh, yeah, and then from, and I, you know, Mayor, so Dickinson Street, I think, is getting, you're going to start to see that need to be done June 1st, right around, after school's on.
After.
Thank you. Chief Wensinger?
Nothing further. Thanks again for the time of the council.
Tony Bishop? Thank you, Madam President. We also had a town hall meeting this evening to discuss summer activity programs in our parks. We had a great group of businesses and organizations who are inside to kind of learn about that program and we're looking to partner with as many people as we can. So if you've got a fun program idea, an activity that you'd like to be a part of, or you know a business that would like to get involved this summer, please have them get ahold of us at the Recreation Department, and we're going to do our best to make this a summer fun for the kids. Thank you. Thank you. Good job, Paulie, on that presentation as well. Thank you, sir.
Okay, Mayor Sanchez?
I have nothing, thank you.
Jim Miller?
Just congratulate Officer over there on this one. That's all, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Call you elder? Paul Graw?
Nothing this evening, thank you very much.
Okay. Council comments, John Elder?
Um, just congratulations to Paul Graw's pole vaulter, who was the indoor state champion of pole vault two weekends ago. It was quite a feat. Fremont Ross had J.J. Brown in eighth place in the 60-meter dash. And Fremont Ross also had Brooklyn Cobal placing eighth at the state girls wrestling tournament. So fall sports or winter sports are officially over. And if you went outside today, you know spring sports are well underway. That's based on the weather. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Jim Smith?
Thank you, Madam President. I have nothing, Madam President.
Okay, Angie Reese? Chris Libel?
Thank you, Madam President. First off, I'll second Councilman Elder. I think Sam, only one pole vault has set the state indoor record.
Correct.
Correct. 16 feet.
16 feet.
With a 1D1 outdoor last year.
Yeah, he's only, I believe, four inches off of the outdoor state record. And we haven't even started yet, so. And keep in mind, St. Joe also holds the outdoor state high jump record. Correct.
I'm going to get there. Unless you go.
No, no, no.
Are your coaches?
Sorry, coaches. So first was Sam. The next one is congratulations to auditor coach Paul Graw is going to St. Joe Hall of Fame. Congratulations, coach.
Thank you.
All right. Also, congratulations to my team, and it's the one who helped coach Brandon, who's also going into the St. Joe Hall of Fame, who still holds the state deep record and general record, or state deep record.
And the...
Yeah, Paul Graw's high jump record at seven foot, and he high jumped for Ohio State. And we share a personal.
So you high jump?
Not bad enough. Maybe five, two.
And the senior class at St. Joe of 1964, which includes former auditor Fred Rechtewald was in that group. And they are primarily getting elected because I believe at minimum their senior year, they won the SBC in football, basketball, and baseball, which were the only male sports available at the time back in 1964. And so it was very uncommon to win all three in that particular group. So former auditor will also be...
Yes.
And I'm sure John Law will make his way there. So every, that's three previous auditors will be at St. Joe last weekend.
All right, well, great. So that concludes our remarks, but congratulations.
Thanks. Danny Addy?
Nothing to report, Madam President.
Okay, Seth Fraser?
Nothing to report, Madam President.
Okay, if anybody in the public want to come up and speak? Keep you, come to the podium and give us your name and address. Hello? Okay, somebody to move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
John.
John Elder, hold.
Addy.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Libel.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Sleek.
Yes. Yes.